Where's that others? I had another thing. I had a better list somewhere. Oh, yeah. Ready? There we go. All right, it's six o'clock, okay. All right, it's seven o'clock. We call this meeting to order on Monday, the 17th of December, exactly eight days before Santa Claus comes, or somebody. I want to welcome everyone, glad to have us tonight. Deacon Michael of the St. Thomas, the Apostle Catholic Church at 4,300 King Springs Road. He's here somewhere, because I saw him. Where's he at?
In the back.
Okay, well, you come up here. He's going to give us our invocation. And when we do the pledge, we've got a group of Boy Scouts here from Troop One. They are the oldest troop in Georgia, and they have been chartered and sponsored since 1924 by the Log Cabin Sunday School. They are attending tonight's council meeting as part of their citizenship in the community badge. They are working on tracking several local issues, most related to trail network, as part of their, as part of how they earn their citizenship, community badge. There are some adults. Terry Nellowich is here. Where's she at? I saw her. Our former council member, our state representative, her son is here. I guess that's why she's here. Jim Dur. And then here's another guy that I'm sure is from Louisiana somewhere. Pascal Gote? Gote?
He's not in town.
Oh, man. I worked on this name all day long. Anyway, when we get through doing the invocation and the pledge, I'll ask the boys to stay up here. Or they can come on up now. And then, but this guy does the invocation first, then I'll get the leader to identify the boys. So would everyone please rise? Absoluto.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving Father, as we gather this evening at this meeting, we ask that you will be in our midst. Send your Holy Spirit to help our councilwomen and men make decisions that will be pleasing to you and in the best interest of our beautiful city. Help those present to be able to discuss the matters at hand in a reasonable way. Heavenly Father, let this meeting be productive, and as should be the case in all areas of our lives, help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds. In this season of love and giving, we must remember our sisters and brothers who are not as fortunate as we are. We pray for all who are homeless or hurting, that they may feel your touch. Keep them safe. We thank you as always for our many blessings and ask that we continue in your mercy. We ask all these things in the name of your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Now, if the Boy Scouts will lead us, yep.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now, everybody can have a seat, except I'd like to have the scout. Another picture of Scott, it's like throwing out the first pitch. We done throwed it out.
I want to go along the stairs.
Okay. All right, so would the, whoever the scout master is or the leader, would you come up and tell us who these kids are? Y'all standing right there. Nice-looking kids.
Again, thank you all for having us here tonight and for letting us participate. Actually, I'm going to let the boys just get, introduce their name and their scout rank each. Griffin, go ahead and start. Loud, speak up.
I'm Griffin, and I'm a Star Scout.
I'm Aiden.
I'm Smite, and I'm a Star Scout.
I'm Eagle.
And our troop is relatively small. We have about 16 active members right now. Looking at probably getting a few more this spring.
So some of them are Star Scouts, and some of them, that's just the rank that they go up.
The ranks that they have. They go from scout to tenderfoot to second class to first class, and then star, life, and eventually eagle scout.
That's great.
We have a relatively young troop. Our oldest boy, I think, maybe have just turned 16 at twins.
Yeah. But you've been there since 1924.
Sure we have.
I can vaguely remember that. Well, thank y'all very much, and thank y'all for coming up tonight. And we appreciate all that you, all that you do and all, and what you're going to do in the future. So I was a Boy Scout, believe it or not. I've still got my book that tells me what I have to do to get to wherever. I guess it's changed a little bit now, so. Thank y'all very much.
Sure.
Okay. Agenda changes. I don't think that we have any on here. Is that right? Yep. Merrill, report proclamation and recognition of the Rotary Club's Smyrna's 55th anniversary. Are there some folks here from, for the Rotary Club? Okay, y'all come on up. I'm going to ask that Corky Welch read that proclamation and present that to these folks, okay?
I'm going to read it from here, and I'll come down and present it to you. "A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Rotary Club of Smyrna's 55th year. Whereas in 1963, 30 business and professional leaders in Smyrna came together for the purpose of forming a Rotary Club to serve Smyrna community and communities around the world. And whereas on December 23rd, 1963, a charter was awarded to the Rotary Club of Smyrna by Rotary International. And whereas James E. Jimmy Freeman has been a faithful member within nearly perfect attendance for 55 years, having attended over 2,750 meetings while most generously supporting the club and its activities. And whereas Rotary Club of Smyrna has devoted considerable energies to education and literacy with meaningful projects and scholarship benefiting our local schools and students, both here and abroad. And whereas Rotary Club of Smyrna has worked to eradicate polio, provide clean water and sanitation, provide shelter to disaster victims, and deliver humanitarian and educational good works throughout Smyrna, Georgia, the southeast and the world for betterment of all. And whereas Rotary Club of Smyrna is internationally recognized for its outstanding support of the Rotary Foundation and for its good works. And whereas Rotary Club of Smyrna provides local leaders an opportunity for meaningful service, fellowship, networking, and growth. And whereas in 2018, Rotary Club of Smyrna celebrates its 55th year delivering the Rotary's motto of 'service above self.' Now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim December 23rd, 2018, as Rotary Club of Smyrna Day in Smyrna, Georgia, and extend gratitude and heart congratulations on behalf of the citizens of Smyrna to the Rotary Club for contributing to the betterment of the Smyrna community for 55 years. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my seal and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this 17th day of December in the year of our Lord 2018. A. Max Bacon."
Anything else you would like to say?
Yes, I need to adjust. I'm really short. I want to thank you for this, and I want to extend an invitation. On January 8th, Tuesday, January 8th, at 12 o'clock, we'll be holding a celebration. All of you are invited. All of you are invited, and I hope to see some of you there. We're going to be not only celebrating our 55 years, but Jimmy Freeman as well, who's just been an incredible member of Smyrna Rotary.
And where's the celebration at?
At Bronner Hall.
Okay.
And if you go on smyrnerotary.org, there's a way of just signing up and letting us know if you're coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else you would like to add? You can move the microphone back up to...
Nope.
No, no, I'm just... Thank y'all very much. Item four is land issues, zonings, and annexations. A 2018-420.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Since I have ownership interest in this property, I am going to recuse myself from the council's consideration of items four, A, B, C, and D.
Okay. If you want to leave, then I'll start over again.
For the record, recused from four, A, B, and C.
Okay. That public hearing only. It's only a request, Z 18-016, rezoning from R 20 to R 12 conditional for the development of 19 single-family homes at a density of 2.47 units per acre. 7.68 acres, land lot 331, ten Rebel Trail, O'Dwyer Properties. Item A will be the public hearing on the zoning request. B will be the adoption of the ordinance which annexes the property in the city. And C will be the final vote on the zoning. So if Ms. Jones will give us the background on that. Before you, is someone here from O'Dwyer Homes? Okay, all right. Ms. Jones, the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. A portion of the subject property, 5.42 acres, was annexed and rezoned in May of 2006 from R 20 to R 12 conditional for 14 single-family homes at a density of 2.78 units per acre, zoning case Z 06-009. The site was never developed and has remained in a natural state since the approval of the zoning in 2006. The Planning and Zoning Board heard the proposed annexation and rezoning at the November 12th, 2018 meeting, and made a recommendation of five to one for approval. Community Development recommends approval from R 20 to R 12 conditional for 19 single-family homes at a density of 2.47 units per acre with conditions. Our senior planner, Rusty Martin, is here to give additional information.
Okay, the applicant is here. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that is in opposition or that would like to make a public statement concerning this zoning request? Okay? Those that want to come up and would like to, I'd like to swear in everybody that would like to speak or think that they would like to speak. So, Mr. Cochran, will you, even if you end up not speaking, or we give you enough information that you're happy with, I still want to get you sworn in, so. All right, if you folks will have a seat. You can sit on front row if you want to, not with the Boy Scouts, but... No, I'll call you up. This is in Mr. Ron Finless Ward, and since he owns the property, he is asked to not be involved in it. So I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Tim Gu. Just got on board. Tim, if you want to go from there. I know that Rusty's going to give us the background on it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, this is a multi-set process that Rusty will fill us in on, where we'll potentially annex two acres into the, into the city, and then rezone, rezone the property. So please fill us in, Rusty.
All right, thank you. As Ms. Sadler Jones stated, this came from P&amp;Z with a recommendation of five to one approval with staff conditions. You guys will make the final decision tonight, but this is an annexation, rezoning, and a zoning amendment, which means they're modifying a previous zoning. This property is located on the west side of Cooper Lake Road, just south of East West Connector, just south of Fire Station Five. Just to give you some perspective. As you can see, highlighted, it has a R 12 zoning classification. The property to the north has R 12. Properties to the east across Cooper Lake Road has R 12. And the properties to the south have RAD. On site, there's an existing vacant one-story, single-family home. The applicant is proposing to demolish that home and build 19 new single-family homes. Here's the future land use map for the site. The city designates the subject property or in the adjoining properties as low-density residential to the, to the north and to the west, and then moderate-density residential and medium-density residential to the south and east. There is no land use change proposed for this site. It will be under three units per acre, which is within the low-density residential, future land use designation. The, provide you with a visual, the, the history Ms. Sadler Jones went over. The property that is highlighted was the original property that was annexed and rezoned in 2006 for 14 single-family homes. You can sort of make out where those lots are and where the proposed road was located. That was approximately 5.42 acres in size, and it went from R 20 to R 12 conditional for 14 homes. The subject property we're talking about today encompasses a majority of that property in addition to two acres that will be added, added to the, to the site and to the plan. And this is the additional two acres that will be added to the site plan. And the net result will be five additional homes to the 14 for a total of 19 total single-family homes. Here's the new proposed site plan for the zoning, and I'll walk you through some different elements of this plan. There is a deceleration lane planned for Cooper Lake Road. The road through the site is proposed to be a private road with a gated entry. The entry may be reconfigured during plan review to meet city standards for stacking and access. This is the proposed location of the stormwater detention facility. This is the proposed green space for the site. I believe it's approximately two and a half acres. This is the stream buffer on, along Nickajack. The proposed setbacks for the site are 13-foot front setback, a five-foot side, and a 20-foot rear. These are the same setbacks that were approved in 2006 with the zoning case that was, was approved at that time. So they're not, they're requesting to maintain those setbacks through, through their additional five lots. With this request, there's five variances. The first one dealing with a reduction in lot size from 12,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet. The next one dealing with a reduction in lot width from 85 to 65 feet. The third one dealing with a front setback reduction from 35 feet down to 13. And the next one dealing with interior side setback from 10 feet to five. And the final one dealing with a rear setback from 30 to 20. These are all the variances that were granted during the original zoning in 2006, so we're just carrying these over with the new modified plan. These are the proposed home elevations for the site. Some pictures of the subject property to give you some context of what's going on out there. And then some views down Cooper Lake Road. And then adjoining properties. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R 20 and R 12 to R 12 conditional for the 19 single-family homes at a density of 2.47 units per acre with following conditions from Section 1201 that deal with the composition of the homes, requiring protective covenants, open space requirements, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, a deceleration lane, decorative entrance, street, street lights, street requirements in burning debris, and then landscaping requirements. In addition to those standard conditions, we're also applying some special conditions that are specific to this site. The first one outlines, lays out the minimum setbacks for the site. And we've already gone over those. Oops. 17 deals with the minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. 18 requires a minimum lot width of 65 feet. 19 deals with the minimum floor area for the home of 2,200 square feet. 20 requires a minimum lock, or allows a minimum lock, maximum lock coverage of 35%. 21 requires a 20-foot access easement to the open space, so they can get access to it and maintain it and possibly use it. 22 requires that the developer be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary by Cobb County Water System. 23 requires the developer to be responsible for any fire access improvements deemed necessary by the city fire marshal. 24 requires the gate to meet city standards with, with respect to access to the site. 25 deals with limits of disturbance and tree protection. 26 requires a storm management facility to be located on its own lot. 27 ties the zoning to the specific site plan, and 28 ties it to the elevations that were submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Martin?
I got a question, Your Honor. Are we adjacent to that Legacy Cove with the exception of the railroad track? I mean, are we, are we requiring sidewalks along there to connect those two developments?
We're requiring sidewalks along... I'd have to go out there and visit the site to see if there's one on the, on that side that connects to Legacy Cove, but we are requiring sidewalks for the length of the development.
Okay.
Ms. Wiggins.
Hi, Rusty. I have a couple of questions, too. Could you put the site plan back up again?
All right. They need to, there you go.
So, and when you, one, I have two questions. One of them showed another parcel that was annexed in, when it was annexed in before, and that's not included in this one?
That is owned by another property owner. So it's not part of this zoning.
Okay. And the other question I have, I know there's one lot, and I can't tell what number it is on here, that has the stream buffer that it goes through. It's next to the common area there, and I guess I just, yeah, it's in the cul-de-sac. Is it, I guess...
Yeah, the stream buffer goes through, it looks like eight and nine partially. The developers studied the, the site plan to make sure that their, the product they're proposing on the site is, is feasible and can be built. So that'd probably be a better question for him to answer. My assumption is that there's enough lot area for them to build that home.
And you're, I'm sorry, say that again?
There's enough lot area on eight and nine to build that home.
The eight and nine, and I'm looking, you're looking at the ones that are sort of to the right of that?
I'm looking on the one, at the lots that are on either side of that small little open space.
Oh, okay. Those are the two. And you think either one of them would be buildable and meet those requirements?
They have buildable space, and I'm sure that you'd have to ask the developer, they've taken their product to make sure that they have enough space to build their product on that lot.
Okay.
So they, they're not going to be allowed to encroach into that setback.
Okay. Thank you.
I got one more question. Does the 7.68 acres include all of the land that's in the stream barrier? Stream buffer? Excuse me.
Seven, yeah, the 7.6 acres includes everything. So, yeah, approximately two and a half acres are open space in the remaining. It's the buildable area.
Any other questions?
Good question, Mr. Mayor. Rusty, can you describe the tree plan, broad brush?
They don't have a formal tree plan at this point. They have a tree protection plan, which they survey trees and make a determination what's out there and what they can save and whatnot, but they don't have a full-scale tree replacement plan as what's going to go back. Usually that's done at plan review and when they submit for permitting.
Okay, so at that point, staff works with the builder to identify what trees need to go back?
At this conceptual level, we're just trying to identify if there's any special trees or anything out there that need to be saved, and for the most part, what's going to be saved and what's not.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Martin? I'd ask for the applicant to step forward. O'Dwyer Homes, is that correct? If you'll tell us who, Scott, does he need to be sworn in? Yeah.
You asked for opposition. I wasn't opposed to it. And I have a quick little presentation.
Yes, sir.
If you tell us who you are, I know you're with O'Dwyer Homes, so...
Yes, sir. Am I able to get that up there? Okay. I'm Jordan Tench. I'm our land development manager at O'Dwyer Homes. Okay, Rusty did a great job kind of presenting for us. I'm going to go through a couple, couple slides, just so you guys see. See if I can work this thing.
If you don't, we got some Boy Scouts here that can...
I'm sure they can figure it out. So I thought it'd be good for you who don't know who O'Dwyer Properties is. And we've done several communities around, around the area, but just want to touch a little bit. We are a local home builder. We're semi-custom. One of the things that we really touch on is that we've been around for 25 years. Dan O'Dwyer is the head of the company and still works there every day. And he went through the ups and the downs, so it's something that we are really proud of. And again, we are solely focused on the Atlanta area and surrounding markets. One of the things we're also very proud of as well is that we are Energy Star rated. There's very little builders in the area that can say that, because we do try and put a good quality home forward. You know, energy efficiency is something that we are really looking at, and we think that's a good long-term solution to give, you know, any area we work in, a, a good home with, you know, different people that come in. We also, as I mentioned, have done a dozen communities in Smyrna area, so little small, small pocket area, so this one fits really well with our vision for different properties. So with the property itself, I want to just kind of reiterate a couple of things, but it is a combination of two properties. One that was zoned in 2006 for 14 smaller homes, and then the annexation from Cobb County, again, a little over two acres. The previous density was 2.8 basically, and we're trying to push that down to 2.5. Again, that allows us, we believe, to get a much better site. This site is kind of tucked in there. It is between Nickajack Creek and the railroad, so I'll kind of point that a little bit more. As Rusty showed earlier, this is the property. I think the tree question was a great question. Anything, really, that whole top section is being remained and around the perimeter. We want it to be a very nice community, and we have some of the larger lots closer to the side so we can keep those trees preserved. As kind of mentioned again, and this, this is a, you know, a amendment on the first piece, which is 14 lots, as you can see where the road is through there. We really just extended this through into the second piece for the, the two acres with the annexation. So we've gone from the 14 lots to the 19 lots, as you can see it. Another good question on the, the stream buffer aspect. I don't have it highlighted on my plan, but with Rusty's is, that's open space. And one of the things that we did, previously, we did look at one of the conditions from staff, and we actually came back and said that we're not going to have any pushback on that. We accepted them, so we actually made a couple of lots a little bit wider into some of the open space and stream buffer, so that we do know all our product does fit. That's the same product that was shown, and I'll show that in a second.
So are you saying it's a little different than that layout shows as far as the width?
No, this is exactly as the layout shows. If you look at it, the, the two lots that are there, there's a little bit of open space. We did take some of that, that open space, so we're about two, two-ish acres, which is about 30% of open space in that. I don't know where it went, but I don't know if you guys can see it. So we do check all our product to make sure that all of our product does work for this, this community we're proposing. I'll ask a couple of my examples, but I'm just going to run through these real quickly. And the only reason I show these and point these out is that these are communities in Smyrna. So these are exactly what we're looking at building. We really'd like to be that craftsman-style home, a lot of variety, and we do think this is going to be a very nice addition to the, the community as well. I'm going to flip through these quickly. Two more things I want to point out. There was a great question at the Planning Commission about the feasibility of the detention pond and the hydro aspect. So one of the things that we did in the meantime is we did the hydrology study, which is really just looking at where all the water goes. And one of the things that we're obviously very concerned about is make sure that we protect Nickajack Creek. So, so we're aware of those two items that we've pushed back and truly trying to make sure that we keep those, those protected. And the, that area where the detention is, is exactly, we have a good design to make sure we have no, no additional impact from that aspect. So if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Jordan, I got a question for you. Um, I, I think I saw, there's a twenty-foot right-of-way, is that right, to get into the green space? Is that, uh, do I remember that correctly?
Access easement from the, uh, zoning stipulations?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, can you show me where that is?
So that, um, they have to, again, with that, there's two open spaces and you'll see it, uh, what we're gonna have to do is, there's a sewer easement that'll go between those two properties, properties three, uh, two and three, I believe, we're, we're gonna go, so that will be some access, um, between those two properties.
Gotcha. How would the green space that's back that goes down the slope by Nikajack Creek, right, how would residents access that?
Uh, we're thinking really just a simple little walking trail.
Between two of the residential properties?
That's correct, that's correct. And now crossing it is, um, really impossible, so it's just gonna be to that bank area. So the, the other side of the creek itself, crossing that creek is, is probably fifty foot wide.
Um, can you pull the, um, the site plan up again, please? So the other, uh, property that, I guess, that I was told that it's owned by somebody else, is that, I guess my concern is, are we creating, how would they access that property, the owner, um, of that?
The only property that's accessible right now from, um, the current, current road is the back piece, there's no houses or anything on, on this property. Um, so that property has been that, that way from the beginning. Um, the only road that runs through there runs through there to the back, about where the cul-de-sac is, where the one house is, there's no other houses or any property on that.
So that's, uh, you're saying that's on that property that was part of the rezoning before and that?
I believe, and see if I can get this mouse moving, I believe it's talked about right here.
If we could see that other, uh, plan, I think I, um, it was more like a, um, site view or, or the?
Probably Rusty's, Rusty's presentation, but.
It was another one, like, more like an airplane, yeah, this, this shows it too, but how is that lot, if it's owned by someone else now, how is it accessed?
You mean this, this property right here?
Yes, that one, mhm.
Um, that one's currently inaccessible, um, so it, it'll remain the same, it is really just Nikajack Creek. Uh, it was somebody who bought it when they rezoned the entire property, um, and they, they just sold off as a nice little nature area, so.
It was a nice, I'm sorry?
As a nice little nature area, but it's, it's currently inaccessible, as it's currently sits right now.
Anyway, okay, but it was part of that rezoning before and now it, it isn't part of it?
And it's actually unusable, but part of why this property, um, kind of makes sense is Nikajack Creek runs straight through the middle of that property as well. They'll, the, the buffers that we, we have shown, they have those same buffers, so you wouldn't be able to build anything on it in particular.
And, um, anyway, so I just wondered, um, from the, how, um, is that an issue with us creating a situation where the property is not accessible, um, and it's owned by somebody else, that's what my concern is?
I think it's the same, and again, in my opinion, um, it's, it's, as it currently lies, it's no different than it currently is right now, um, it currently is inaccessible.
And Jordan, I'm sorry if I missed it, what's the price point for the homes?
Um, I did not mention it, but, uh, so within the area we're currently building are fours and fives, so I would expect it to be probably in that five range starting.
All right, anybody got any other questions? All right, thank you. Rust, anything else that you want to add to this that, uh, uh, confused us anymore than we?
Just to clarify that, the comments, those two larger pieces that go to the north, if you show that plan that's on the screen down here, those pro, a majority of those properties are across Nikajack Creek, and this near lots seven and eight right there, I mean, that, the, the topography there almost goes straight downhill, about twenty feet, and those properties could be accessed through the, the easements on the other side of Nikajack Creek from, I want to say that's North Cooper Lake on the, or, I can't remember what the road is that comes in up by, uh, by the urgent care facility, off the top of my head, I'm just blanking, but they can be accessed from that side over there, and that's how they service the dam and everything for, um, Fontaine.
Okay. So that's, that's unbuildable property, you couldn't?
It's unbuildable, and a lot of that property is owned by the railroad as well, so, um.
Rusty, even the green space that's back there, we were talking about that green space, the open space, that's not, that's not going to be developed, right?
It's not going to be developed, and a majority of it is on the other side of Nikajack from the development.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Rust. Uh, we had two folks that, um, were sworn in to speak, if you'll come forward and tell us, uh, who you are and where you live at, and any comments that you'd like to make.
Yeah, hi, my name is Herbert Schlösser, I live in the Winings Estates neighborhood, and, uh, I'm a little bit concerned about the stormwater issues with that neighborhood, because we've just recently spent about, uh, about to spend about three hundred thousand dollars to repair erosion caused by Nikajack Creek on our, on our, uh, farm pond we have there, and, uh, every development will increase the water level in Nikajack Creek because the water runoff gets quicker usually if a developed area into the creek, so the water level will rise quicker. And that's kind of, I want to make sure that provisions have been done, that you, you provide a equally slow water level ra, rise to the detention ponds you have in there. That's my concern to the zoning.
Thank you.
And that's the question I really have, did you provide that?
Okay, uh, just as soon as the next speaker, then we'll get somebody from staff to answer, you tell us who you are and where you live.
Yeah, uh, thank you, John Joseph, also from, uh, Winings Estates. I'm a retired R and B guy, I speak loud, so I'll, I'll keep away from the microphone so I don't make anybody deaf. Uh, Herbert is, is my neighbor, and so we have mutual concerns. My understanding of the project, the variance, is we are, we are going from twelve thousand to a potential of six thousand, uh, lot size, which, which essentially, I, I believe, to reduce the amount of absorption that the ground is getting in, so the creek is going to get more water because of the, because of the runoff. And to Herbert's point, we've, we're in the process of spending about three hundred thousand hours because the creek, in a heavy rain and added water, begins to erode the berm that separates this farm pond from the creek. And we also have a stormwater concern over that, because if the berm is breached and the, and it floods and puts pollution into the creek, we have a problem. So we are of course concerned with what is going on upstream of us because we are downstream.
All right, yeah, thank you. Rusty, you want to, you want to address that, uh, or maybe our new city engineer who's, uh, this is Kevin Moore, uh, he's, 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 he's on the agenda somewhere to be.
Next.
Approved to hire a new city engineer, so, Kevin, you want to address, uh, the gentleman's concern?
Oh, sure, so this development will be required to meet the, the three portions of our stormwater management ordinance, which is peak flow reduction, water quality, and channel protection. And during this phase of the process, during the rezoning, we asked for them to provide a preliminary drainage report, which they, they have done, and, uh, what we look for is to make sure that they have reserved enough area on-site to meet those three criteria in our stormwater, uh, management ordinance, which they have. So we'll be working out those details in the design, but they will not be allowed to increase the peak flow in Nikajack Creek. So hopefully that addresses your concerns.
Yeah, I saw just the detention pond in the middle of the neighborhood.
Correct.
On, but on the, the, the top side, you have a runoff which doesn't go to the ten, detention pond.
Correct, and, and that's part of their final design, uh, we'll be looking at the, they have a study point at the low end, there's a potential to be, for them to allow a certain amount of their water to flow without detention. Uh, you kind of think of it like a bell curve, uh, when the water flows down Nikajack Creek, it has a peak, like a bell curve. So there's the possibility that this development will be able to release its water before the Nikajack peak hits. So you don't want to combine the two peaks of the development and Nikajack Creek, because that could increase the flow. So we'll be looking at those types of, uh, details when the actual design comes in.
Okay, any, any questions, Kevin? Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Hope you get approved as our new city engineer.
Hope so, too.
I, does anyone have any other questions? Uh, this is the public, uh, hearing portion of the agenda, if there's no other questions or comments, I'm gonna close that portion down, and we'll move into item B twenty eighteen dash five twenty-nine, approval of ordinance number twenty eighteen dash twelve, annexation request, one hundred percent of owners requesting annexation, land lot three thirty-one, seventeenth district, second section, Cobb County, two point zero zero acre tract, ten Rebel Trail, Smyrna, Georgia. Uh, ward seven, it will become effective, uh, January the first, twenty nineteen. Uh, I'll turn this over to Mr. Tim Gould, we've already had the background on it for, uh, action by the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is the, uh, first step of a two-step process where we'll first, uh, vote to annex the property. So, Mr. Mayor, uh, I move to approve item B twenty eighteen dash five twenty-nine, uh, approval of ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twelve, annexation request as previously stated.
A motion to second, uh, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? This is to the, this is to annex the property, yep. It's approved six zero, uh, and for the record, Mr. Fennel has, has recused himself and he's not in the room. Item, uh, C twenty eighteen dash five thirty-seven is the final vote, approval zoning request Z eighteen dash zero one six, rezoning from R twenty to R twelve, conditional for the development of nineteen single-family homes at a density of two point four seven units per acre, seven point six eight acres, land lot three thirty-one, ten Rebel Trail, O'Dwyer Properties LLC, Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the final step to approve the nineteen single-family homes. Uh, I move to approve item C two thousand eighteen dash five thirty-seven, approval of zoning request Z eighteen dash zero one six, as previously stated.
A motion to second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved six zero, and for the record, Mr. Fennel, uh, is not here and he recused himself, so that is approved. Thank y'all very much for coming out to speak about the issue of drainage and runoff. Uh, O'Dwyer Home is a, a good reputable builder, and we're glad that they're continuing. If anybody had to build a property, we're glad that they are going to build it, so, and we'll hold them for those things, so you won't have any water downstream. Uh, item D, ordinance twenty eighteen, yeah, get Ron Fennel back in here. Item D twenty, ordinance twenty eighteen dash twenty-one, it's a public hearing ordinance twenty eighteen twenty-one for code amendments to sections four oh two, seven twelve, seven fourteen, seven sixteen, and seven twenty. Uh, the zoning ordinance are approved to add definition related to breweries and distilleries, and to list breweries and distilleries as permitted uses within the general commercial, light industrial, central business district, and mixed-use zoning district city of Smyrna. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Over the last year, Community Development Department has met with several breweries looking to locate their breweries, brewers, rather, looking to locate their breweries within the city of Smyrna. Community development staff have worked with these brewers to identify potential business locations as well as assist with the permitting and licensing process. The city zoning ordinance is silent on breweries, brew pubs, and distilleries, and does not list the use as a permitted use under any zoning district in the city. Due to, due to the number of, of requests to assist with the locations within our city limits, Community Development is proposing a code amendment to the zoning ordinance to identify the zoning districts where breweries, brew pubs, distilleries can be permitted. The Planning and Zoning Board heard the proposed text amendment at the August thirteenth, twenty eighteen meeting, and made a recommendation for approval by a vote of six to zero. Um, Ken Sudrith from Community Development is here to present this information for you this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones, um.
Let, let me just say this, this is a public hearing, uh, if there's anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this, uh, now's the time to, um, to be sworn in. Thanks, Scouts, this is past y'all's bedtime. Wish I could go with you. Um, the, uh, is it, there's no one here I'm seeing that's in opposition to, to this, so, uh, Mr. Sudrith?
In that vein, uh, Mayor, I'll try to make this quick, because a lot of the information that this amendment does has already been read. It's in the agenda, uh, with this. What we have, um, is a, as stated, we have a history of people inquiring about this. Uh, we feel now is the time to act on that. The zoning ordinance, uh, was, is indeed silent on that, so, uh, what this amendment does is gives, gives us the ability to, to address these, um, uh, breweries, uh, that have been requested for us. Without going through reading each and every one of those, that in essence is what the summary of, of what we're doing tonight is. So to do that, we've got to amend multiple sections of the zoning ordinance. Uh, they're listed there as, you know, seven twelve, seven fourteen, seven sixteen, seven twenty, uh, which are our G C, our light industrial, central business district, and our mixed-use zoning districts. Just to give you a, a visual as to where that is, that would be the downtown area. That would be along our major corridors, like South Cobb. That would be, um, in our mixed-use area, the, the most obvious one and the one that we've discussed recently is Riverview Landing down off of Riverview Road. They do have a, um, brewery, um, proposed as part of, uh, the first phase of that development, and then the light industrial, which would be over in the Highland Park area, um, that they, if somebody wanted to use one of those industrial spaces for, for a brewery, they could indeed do that. So this is, this is the zoning part, uh, of this, and is, um, Mr. Gould has, had referred to in the previous rezoning, this, there's actually two, uh, issues going on here. This is the first part of the change, which, um, allows us to deal with the zoning ordinance, so the use can be permitted, but, but because we're dealing with an alcohol-related issues, there are other sections in our city code outside of the zoning portion that have to be amended as well. That will be discussed later in the evening, so tonight, right now, what we are doing is just dealing with the zoning aspects. So the changes that you would make would allow those, um, to occur in the G C and the L I and the C B D and the mixed-use, uh, classification. There's a much longer presentation, but that's the simple version of what several months of, uh, review, um, have resulted in with that. I'm happy to answer any question if you need more specifics.
Any questions of any council member? This has been a lengthy process, uh, to finally get to where we're, where we are now, so.
One quick, quick question, Ken, is this something that most every other city in the area has in place?
I, I would say, I would rephrase it, if they don't already have it, they're working towards it.
That means they'll copy what we adopt tonight and put their name on it?
It is a possibility, yes, sir.
You mentioned, Ken, just certain, like, the corridors.
Right.
But, um, are there other areas in the city that would also be considered, like the G C or the light industrial, that we, that you can think of?
Um, when we were putting this together, uh, Ms. Blackburn, we did go through. When we were putting this together, Ms. Blackburn, we did go through and outline where those were. I just gave you a sample of that. We feel pretty sure, or pretty comfortable, maybe a better word, that we're not introducing a use in an area that it would not be amenable to.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any other questions, Ken? Okay. This is Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, thanks to Community Development, Ken, and Rusty, for the hard work to, to change the ordinances necessary and come up, craft the ordinance we're about to vote on. I think this opens us up, opens the city up for some great economic opportunities. As somebody in the council once said not so long ago, it'll be an economic engine to some expect, some extent here in the city, so. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve item 4D, ORD, 2018-21, ordinance of code amendment to sections 402, 712, 714, 716, 720 of the zoning ordinance as proposed to add definitions related to breweries and distilleries and to list breweries and distilleries as permitted uses within the general commercial, light industrial, central business districts, and mixed-use zoning districts. Second, City of Smyrna.
Second.
Motion to second to approve. Is there any further discussion? So, there we go. It's approved seven-zero. Thank you very much. Privilege license A, 2018-506, public hearing, privilege license request, 2018-506, beer, wine, and liquor pouring, 2451 Cobb Parkway, The Pirates Boil, Inc., doing business as The Pirate Boil with James Yang as the agent. Mr. Yang here? Okay, hold on one second. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
James Yang will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at the referenced location. Mr. Yang has been given a copy of the Alcohol Beverage Ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. A background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department failed to reveal any information that would preclude issuance of this license. James Yang has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the Smyrna Police, I'm sorry, the City of Smyrna ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. Staff does recommend approval.
Okay. I know that Mr. Yang is here. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning the request for this previous license, beer, wine, and liquor pouring? Let the record show there is none. Scott, you know, you swear him in and then we'll turn this over to Mr. Norton. All right. Derek.
Ms. Yang, thank you for doing business in Smyrna, first of all. And you want to tell us a little bit about, about your business and where you're located and?
My business is a restaurant based on a Louisiana-style boiled Cajun seafood. And I'm actually from New York. Actually moved here for four months. You know, I love Georgia. So, yeah, we planning to build this restaurant out and to serve the community of Smyrna and the greater Atlanta area and of course, Georgia.
We welcome you. Just, just for the record, I know Ms. Adler Jones read it, but you've gone through all the training required to have the liquor pouring and beer pouring license. And you understand that Smyrna PD conducts things to make sure that all of our businesses are abiding by our ordinances?
Yes, understand.
Very good. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Yang, what are your hours? I'm over here on the far end.
Oh, okay. Yeah. My hours, we're planning to open around like 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Every day?
Maybe Friday, Saturday. On weekends is extended to one hour extra.
Okay. Very good.
And when is the official opening?
It's still, it's still not under renovation right now.
Okay.
We're planning to open around March.
Do you have a menu?
Uh, no, not yet. Planning on it, working on it, yes.
So, for folks that don't know, this is over at the Office Depot on Cobb Parkway. And it's, they've sort of reduced the size of Office Depot when you're somewhere in there. Is that correct?
Yes. It's a, originally, it's an Office Depot location, so we're taking the whole location down. It's an 8,600 square feet restaurant.
Huh.
Yeah, seafood. Yeah, a lot of seafood.
A New York kid that's going to cook Louisiana Creole, right?
Yes.
Do you know how to do it?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I trust you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yep, good luck. All right. Yep.
Okay, looking forward.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Norton?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion now to approve item 5A, privilege license request, 2018-506, beer, wine, and liquor pouring at 21, 2451 Cobb Parkway, The Pirates Boil, Incorporated, doing business as The Pirates Boil with James Yang as agent.
Second.
I have a motion to second by Ms. Blackburn. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
I vote aye.
Yeah. Something wrong with Fennel. Got, yeah. Motion to second. It's approved seven-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck and we'll be over there. Let's see here. Item six is formal business, A, 2018-533, approval to hire Kevin Moore as the city engineer. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
A search was conducted for the position of city engineer after interviewing several candidates. It is my recommendation that we appoint Kevin Moore to the position. Kevin Moore has served as our assistant in city engineer, and most recently, he's served as the interim city engineer for the last two months.
I'd ask that Kevin come up. This is under, I believe, Mr. Welch's committee, Public Works. Mr. Welch, anything you want to grill, Mr.?
No, I'm going to be nice to him tonight. I will say to the audience, I sat on the selection committee for Mr. Moore. We interviewed three, three different individuals. Felt like he was definitely the most qualified and I think he'll do a good job for the city. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve to hire Kevin Moore as a city engineer.
Motion to second by Ms. Blackburn that we approve this appointment. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved seven-zero. Tonight was very nice having you here.
Thank you, sir.
It's approved, though, so you're in.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It was nice having you here because questions like that come up a lot during our public hearing. Thank you, guys, for coming and staying as long as you did. That's the voice, Councils. But tonight was, was good to have you here because we had some interest from citizens about the possibility of flooding and, and that's always comes up, what do you do? And so, just glad to have you here tonight and you might be coming back again. That you just didn't know about it. So, any other comments? Kevin, anything you want to say?
I appreciate the opportunity. Look forward to, I've worked with some of you already and look forward to continuing a good working relationship. Thank you so much.
Been very responsive. Hope that'll continue.
Very much so. Kevin, thank you much and welcome.
Congratulations.
B, 2018-531, approval of the use of FY 2018 surplus. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Fiscal year 2018 ended with stronger revenues and lower expenditures than anticipated. The surplus amount for fiscal year 2018 is 3.5 million, per the audited financial statements. As a result, the city has a positive year in, is in a positive year-end position. Finance recommends allocating this surplus to cover several unexpected unbudgeted expenditures and to recommit funds for the future capital improvement projects and the vehicle replacement fund needs. Staff recommends approval of the suggested use of surplus. Of the specific projects are the police camera, body and in-car camera project that was awarded two weeks ago, again, to replenish the capital improvement projects, replenish the vehicle replacement fund. Our police department bonus program is more successful than anticipated, so we'd like to budget some additional funds there and to purchase three additional police vehicles.
Mr. Ron Fennel, who chairs the Finance and Administration Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm humbled to having the privilege of cheering the Finance Committee on the heels of the able management and stellar performance by my predecessor. My, my two predecessors, one is Chair Terry Nulowitz, who did a great job of helping us achieve our AAA bond rating status, wonderful achievement in the history of Smyrna that we're going to brag about forever. And then my predecessor in Ward seven, which was Pete Wood, who chaired this committee for 20 years. And I think, me being the third in line to do this, to continue the shepherding of the budget, I'm very proud that our Finance Committee, Mr. Norton and Mr. Welch, have helped support our efforts to be very conservative and frugal in the use of our funds. And we were able to enjoy a surplus this year, which we're dedicating to these purposes for our vehicle replacement fund, a capital improvement program, and still maintain some surplus. We're about thirty, at about 30% as a surplus opportunity when the Georgia Municipal Association and other financial institutions in the government field encourage cities to have two months surplus. We enjoy much more than that. So, we're very proud that we have the ability to serve some of these needs, to push our city's priorities another year further with additional surplus. So, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of 2018-531.
I have a motion, excuse me, a motion to second to approve this use of surplus, segmented by Mr. Norton. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved seven-zero. Thank you very much. Item C, 2018-538, approval of fiscal year 2019, FY 19, budget amendment for staff merit increases. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
As a part of the annual budgeting process, an estimate for merit increases for eligible city employees is included in the contingency fund. The amount included in the FY 2019 budget was $295,000. Staff are scheduled to receive merit increases effective January 1st, 2019. Staff evaluations, performance evaluations were completed on or before June 30th, 2018. Based on an employee score of 1.5% to 3.5%, and based upon calculations by the HR department, a budget amendment of $291,008 is needed for this increase. Applicable FICA taxes are included in this amount. Staff recommends approval of the fiscal year 2019 budget amendment for staff merit increases.
Mr. Ron Fennel, who chairs the Finance and Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see by the dollar amount being proposed to be spent, the budgeting team is pretty accurate at prognosticating what amount. So, we're within $4,000 of that amount. It's important for us as a city council to recognize and acknowledge the hard work and the performance of our day-to-day employee population that makes City, the City of Smyrna, what it is. And so, I move approval of this fiscal year budget amendment for the merit increases that we adopted this year.
I have a motion to second by Mr. Welch to approve this budget amendment for staff merit increases. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved seven-zero. Item D, 2018-534, this item will be table. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This will not, I'm sorry. 2018-534, award Talleson Park Playground to U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance bidder, Copan, Inc., 605 West Howard Lane Suite 101, Austin, Texas, 78753, for the amount of $179,975.66 from FY CIP and authorize the mayor to execute. Any related documents? Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Parks and Recreation requested proposal from Compan for the demolition, site work, drainage system, sitting wall, and installation of new playground area at Talleson Park to replace outdated playground equipment. Compan supplied a proposal under U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance in the amount The Parks and Recreation Director and the purchasing manager recommend award of the project to Compan Incorporated and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
This is Ms. Susan Wilkerson, who chairs the Parks and Recreation Commission. Ms. Wilkerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so before I moved to make the motion, I was wondering if Ms. Graham could put the, the PDF, the photograph of the park up on the screen because I think it's a really nice investment in the, she can't have, she doesn't have it?
Maybe.
Oh, okay. I thought it was just part of the documents. Okay, well, anyway, it's a nice playground and at this time, I will move to approve item 6D, 2018-534, award Talleson Park Playground to U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance bidder, Copan, Inc., 605 West Howard Lane, Suite 101, Austin, Texas, 78753, for $179,975.66 from the fiscal year 19CIP and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Motion to second by Ms. Blackburn to approve this purchase. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please, folks? It's approved seven-zero. I want to thank Richard Garland, his staff, and those guys, Richard especially, for getting us new equipment for our community. And it's not like the old swing set and what else do we have? The things that used to throw up after you, the merry-go-round things, yeah, so. Seesaws, had seesaws back in those days, yeah. It's a great addition, I thank Richard for that. Item E is the one that we need to table, 2018-535, adoption of Recreate Smyrna Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We had some questions during our work session about that, and so I think it's just best that we just table that until the first meeting in January, okay? Ms. Wilkerson.
Thank you. Yes, we just need to work a little bit, our staff does, on articulating some of the language in the plan. And so, at this time, I move to table item 6E, 2018-535, adoption of Recreate Smyrna Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Motion to second by Ms. Blackburn to table this issue. All those in favor of the motion? We did table that till the first meeting in January, right? Okay.
What's the date?
It's approved seven-zero. Item F, 2018-502, approval to enter into RAW Master Access Agreement with E-Tex Net, is that right? Systems? And that's, and the mayor should execute all related documents. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Over the past year, cities throughout Georgia have been approached by wireless infrastructure companies such as Extonet Company, Extonet Systems, requesting permits to install companies such as Extonet Systems requesting permits to install poles in municipal right-of-way and/or place equipment on existing poles. Extonet Systems has submitted an application to the City of Smyrna to place small cell antennas at various locations in the city. While we recognize the need to accommodate wireless infrastructure, we also recognize the importance of addressing the health, safety, and welfare of the public, given the numerous facilities and infrastructure that will be, that will need to be placed in the city's right-of-way. Staff does recommend approval of this right-of-way master access agreement with Extonet Systems Incorporated and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
Mr. Ron Fennel, who chairs the Finance and Administration Committee. Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As those of you who have been around a little while remember, we had a similar agreement with mobility, which is a wireless carrier. We're merely extending the next generation. This allows the capacity to be expanded through a 5G network from a private vendor. I'm sure there'll be others coming after this with a similar type or even more robust products, but this is the application we have before us. I think it's a great opportunity for Smyrna to expand our capacity capabilities through these proposals that Extonet Systems is the first to approach us on. I move approval of 2018-502.
Motion and second by Mr. Norton to approve this agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve 7-0. Item G, Ordinance 2018-20, approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter Six, entitled Alcoholic Beverages to Include Section 6-2. Definitions 6-34. Types of Licenses Section 6-37. Limitation of Use Section 6-46. Carrying Prohibited Section 6-62. Sunday Sales Permit Section 6-118. Distance from Certain Locations and Adding the Article 2, Division 1, Section 6-81. Breweries. Ms. Tammy Sattler Jones, the background, please. And this is why it took us so long, I think, to finally get this adopted, making all these changes. Ms. Jones.
In order to update the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances to allow breweries, the following amendments have to be made. I'm actually going to turn it over to Ken Sudrith to give you more information regarding the language changes.
If we could just have the Christmas version, that would be great.
I think you've pretty much have read the Christmas version on that. This is the second part of what staff is bringing to you tonight to be able to accomplish the brewery amendment, as we call it. As we've talked before, there are a lot of different sections in the ordinance. This has to do with the non-zoning sections that we've already taken care of, but there's other parts of the code. And as you can see, there is many that need to be amended. So without reading every one of those again, since it's already been read, staff is supportive of this, and this is compatible and necessary to travel with what we did earlier tonight under the Community Development Section with that. So I hope that's a quick enough version for you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Gu, who chairs the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, thanks to Scott Cochran, the city attorney, and Ken Sudrith and his group for working through the details of this. It's taken some time, and it's the right thing to do to make sure we have the ordinances correct and efficient. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I move to approve item 6G, ORD 2018-20, amendment to the City's Smyrna Code of Ordinances as previously read.
Motion and second by Mr. Norton to approve this amendment to the Smyrna City Code. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item A is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the December 3rd, 2018 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the November 15th, 2018 committee of the HO meeting minutes. Item C, approval to use council chambers on Tuesday, January 29th, 2019, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM for the Heritage at Vinings Annual HOA Meeting.
They hear...
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion and second by Mr. Norton to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Item 9, committee reports will start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton, Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to share with you all some good news relating to public safety in our city. At our work session on Thursday, the police department presented to us and told us that because of the recruitment incentives that we put forward and implemented a few months ago, they are almost fully staffed for the first time in, I think I heard them say, 20-some years, or one of the first time in 20 years. So that's great for our community, and then we've got some re-enlistment bonuses, or resigning bonuses. So we're not only fully staffed, we're keeping our officers, which is great for us, and we're saving a ton of money by not having to retrain, you know, train new officers here because we're losing others. So they've said that as they travel around the state and even the country, we are the leader or the model community for this type of recruitment incentive. So pleased that we did that and pleased that it's working. And then I'm going to take a point of personal privilege. I want to recognize my dad, Dave Norton, who's here. He's in the back. He drove all the way here from Toddville, Iowa. He usually watches this live stream. He's the one, but he comes down here, he doesn't come down to see me anymore. He comes down here to see my kids.
Boy, you're telling us he came all the way down here to see this council meeting?
No, sir, that's not what I said. But pleased to have you here, Dad. Thanks for being here. With that, I yield.
Yeah, we heard your kids back there. Yeah, thank you. We're glad you're here. Ms. Bluestein.
I just wanted to wish everybody a very happy holiday season. If you're traveling this weekend, be careful. Remember, the, we're not the only state that has that hands-free driving. There are other states, they just don't have it posted sometimes. But anyway, have a very happy holiday and a good new year, and we'll see you again next year. Thank you.
Ms. Bluestein. I'm sorry, Ms. Blackburn. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Yes. First, I just want to say welcome to a few of my Ward Three residents that are out there. Always glad to see you visiting and being part of our city council meeting. And of course, Terry Nellowitz is here. Hey, girlfriend. Thank you for being here. I'll see you tomorrow morning. Also want to just welcome a couple of new hires to the city. Of course, we met Mr. Kevin Moore. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being part of the staff. I'm really excited. You're already up and running and making things happen, putting out fires. Thank you. Appreciate that. We met tonight our lead city marshal, which is Jamela Dewitt, and our building inspector is Bill, I forget Bill's last name. Sorry, Bill, but we welcome, we welcome Bill. And then we had three public work employees, Adam Scott, Jarella Smallwell, and Robert Raines, and Communication Officer Katie Kapazi, and then we have a police officer that was hired, Jake Prague. Hope I said that name correctly. So just welcome to the Smyrna family. Also want to invite my Ward Three residents to my community meeting that I'm going to be having tomorrow morning from 8:00 to 9:30 at Cafe Lucia. Tomorrow is actually the 18th of December, and it will be one year that I have been your city council representative and honored to have that opportunity to serve you. So tomorrow morning, we're going to just talk about what's happening in Ward Three and what we can do to continue with all the positive things that are going on. And with that, I also want to say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa Boxing Day, Happy Epiphany Day, and whatever it is that you may be celebrating, just want to wish you happiness there, and also wish you a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year, and we'll see you soon. God bless. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Blackburn. Just one more. Mr. Welch. I'm one behind, Mr. Welch.
Thank you, I think. I just want to again welcome Kevin, welcome him aboard as the new city engineer, of course he's been serving with the city for over a year, he said, but want to welcome him as a city engineer. Secondly, I want to invite everybody this coming weekend to come see Santa at the house across the street, the Old Aunt Fanny's Cabin, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for the weekend. All donations go through Kwanzaa directly to the Public Safety Foundation, so it goes to a very good cause to help us buy gifts for the children in Christmas time next year. But we'd certainly enjoy you to be there. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to start out thanking the staff for the hard work they've done to provide the event the other night at the Taylor Bronner House, Taylor Bronner Hall, excuse me. And they had the collecting the coats and lots of activities for the kids, and I went by there, and it looked like the kids were having a lot of fun. And I think it was, I heard several parents say that they were glad to have something to, they could do with their children like that because of all the rain. And so it was very well attended, and Santa was there. And with that, I'd like to wish everyone Happy Holidays and also a Happy New Year for 2019. And I'd also want to welcome Kevin Moore aboard. We're very excited. Thank you.
Mr. Tim Gu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, Kevin, congratulations, and look forward to working with you here in the future. A couple of quick things. Last Wednesday was a great event, Taylor Bronner Hall for the Meet and Greet for Peace. Yeah, a great collection of community members, and it was really a great example of the community working together in a very inclusive, inclusive manner. So it was a nice event, and thanks for staff and mayor for putting that on, and more importantly, Smyrna United Task Force for organizing it. Secondly is the Dancing with the Stars event with a few of our famous people here participating in January 19th. One thing, it's a big fundraiser for Campbell High School. It's going to fund, hopefully fund, their new workout facility that'll happen here shortly. So if you have any interest, you can vote for Mr. Scott Andrews, Ms. Marilyn Blackburn, Sergeant Lewis Defense, and is there one other person? I'm not sure. Anyway, and then of course, our mayor is going to be one of the talented judges. But January 19th, please buy your tickets, vote with your dollars for one of our talented dancers. And with that, oh, and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you. That I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank a couple of my Boarding Estates residents. Ward Seven is so far away from City Hall, we rarely have people venture all the way down for this exciting, riveting public event. So thank you for taking time to be involved and to come down here. I also want to thank our former mayor, Pro Tim, and our state representative, Terry Nellowitz, for being with us for the whole meeting and bringing another leader through the scouts into our knowledge base of how local government works. He gets to see how it works under the Gold Dome. I think this is a lot more enjoyable, but anyway, thank you for being here and staying engaged in our community and being a leader, and thank you for the base that you gave a lot of us. I also want to thank Kristen Robinson and her team, including Jared, and of course, Tammy and Scott for helping on the finance issues this year, getting us to this point. We've now passed a budget, budget amendment. We've spent this surplus. I'm very proud of the work that the team, Corky, Derek, and the team were able to do this year, and thank you very much for allowing me to be part of that. I also want to note that Marilyn Blackburn was recently elected Secretary of the Cobb Municipal Association. Congratulations, representing the City of Smyrna, on that panel of local government officials. Finally, tomorrow is the launch of the Safe Holiday Campaign by Team Georgia. That's our partnership. I've been on this panel for 20-some-odd years, been chair for about 15. But it's a partnership between the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, the Georgia State Patrol, the hospitality industry, the sports venues and franchises, taxicab industry, and the insurance industry, to help continue to promote safe driving, both with the distracted driving issue more prominent now. We have expanded the role so that at venues where you've seen a designated driver booth in the past, we've done that for the past 25 years in the major sports venues in Georgia, and partners with our Atlanta Braves, Hawks, Falcons, now Kennesaw State University and others. So we're very proud of it. We're going to launch our Safe Holiday Campaign tomorrow. It'll be newsworthy. All of the broadcast media put it out, starting tomorrow and all through the holiday season. Just reminding patrons to all of our restaurants, hotels, and venues to be safe in use of alcohol. We don't say, "Don't drink," just don't drink and drive, don't text and drive, don't find yourself in a situation where you or someone else's safety can be compromised. This is all about being in the safe holiday spirit. We want everybody to arrive at their destination safely, and I urge you all to adopt that. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fennel. Ms. Tammy Sattler Jones.
I also want to say congratulations to Kevin Moore as our new city engineer, and I look forward to working with you in our newly reorganized city engineer department. And I also want to wish everyone a Happy Holiday and a Happy New Year and a prosperous 2019.
Mr. Scott Andrews.
Congratulations, Kevin. Now will you please hurry up and get that assistant director hired? And I want to take a moment. These gentlemen have sat here all night, have been very patient. So if you don't mind, join me right up front here, since you've earned this opportunity. Many of you may be aware, Money Magazine recently named Smyrna the 44th best place to live in the entire U.S. Gentlemen, join me up front for a quick picture, if you don't mind.
Is that why they had us stay? I thought they had done something. Yeah. Hold on, let me get my glasses off. I'm not taking them off. So what does that say on the plaque?
You want me to read that off, Mr. Mayor?
Not to me.
All right. So here we go. "Rich in history, Smyrna takes pride in its alias, the John Colle City, so named for the yellow flowers that transform it each spring. Credit goes to the gentleman in Spokane back in the 1880s who shipped a parcel of bulbs to his parents." This is actually longer than I intended, so I'll get to the bottom.
You can just cut through it.
Okay. Well, what this does is recognize Smyrna is the 44th best place to live. This was featured in Money Magazine in October 2018, and it looks at everything from population, median income, graduation rate, home price, average commute, and we're 43rd runner-up. So we've got a little work to do, but that's not a bad place to be on the list.
Forty-four out of how many cities are in the United States?
Ooh, that's rough, Mayor.
Yep, yep. Not bad, not bad at all. Anything else, Scott?
That's it, sir.
Okay. Mr. Scott Cochran, our city attorney. You got nothing? Okay. Merry Christmas, okay. Ms. Graham? Ms. Tina? You got any name?
Merry Christmas.
Good girl. Okay, that, we don't have anyone, we don't have a show cause hearing, and we do not have anyone signed up for citizen input. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, drive safe, and we will be back the first of the year. I declare this meeting adjourned. I just sent you a note, Marilyn.